I am trying to get this thing done within an hour. All the members back to table, please.
Maybe we can help phase it in that way. Go ahead.
If I could have a children vice chair's attention? Okay. Five to six, alright. Ten over six. Alright, I think we can do this. Both members listen. If you could listen. There are two things I want to accomplish out of this governance meeting, three things. First, I want to be able to get this thing done, hopefully within half an hour, so that we can all go to respective places we've already committed to go. And two topics, first one is hear from feedback from board liaisons, board member liaisons, to respective advisory committees on the second attachment. If you open up the second attachment on the board doc and go to the bottom of the first page, where it says citizen advisory committee membership, that's the one. Whether you have heard any feedback on committee membership. And then if you go to next page, annual reports, timeline, how to do, whether you have heard any feedback. We're not making any final decisions, just want a board member to share their feedback with other board members. And then, in May, I'm hoping that we may, we will come to a consensus on to what to do for the next school year, or for many years to come. Otherwise, if we don't reach a consensus in May, then we're not going to be able to do anything for the next school year. Because we have committee appointments to make, is coming up, you know, pretty soon after that. So that's our issue. Second one is, after that, we want, second one is standing committee redesign, potential redesign. There are a couple of options that the governance committee wanted to present to the full board to consider, and if board members are prepared and willing to have some preliminary discussion of that, that is fine. If you have questions to ask, that I can answer, or other governance committee member can answer, that is fine. But I wanted you to see those potential options. And then, we have a whole month before the May work session, and at the May work session, again, for this one, we will not be able to reach some consensus if you want to do any change for the next school year. If you don't do it in May, again, for the next school year, it may be too late. Okay? So with that, who wants to start on the advisory committee feedback? Yes?
I spoke to my advisory committee at the time. Going to 12 appointees is fine, and staggering the, going to 12.
Going to 13 appointees and staggering the, the presentation is fine.
Which committee is that?
APAC.
APAC, okay. Anything else from APAC, other than that?
Make it a meaningful charge.
Okay, I'm sure that Madame Clark is taking notes, right? Thank you. And, yes, Mrs. McLaughlin.
So for MSAOC, in my conversations with them, if you look at the five bullets listed here, staggering the ports, scheduling no more than two, you know, the size, staff responses being there immediately, not three or four months later. They're all in support of these. They were a little cautious about the scaling MSAOC down to 13 because it's, it's an advisory committee that really benefits from some of our additional advocacy groups that represent our underrepresented communities. So I think they're comfortable that if we obviously work with them with some latitude, that if they might say we need to be at 15, but I think they overall recognize the value of being smaller and more nimble in the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Before I forget myself, ACE, Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee, is very similar to, you know, your committee, Mrs. McLaughlin. For the committee membership, they feel that they would be benefited by having some community representatives other than board member appointees serve on. So they would like a little more than 13. And also, as far as the reporting timeline is concerned, they actually prefer to the later later in June or early July as opposed to early June. They would like a little more time to prepare their report. And also, for the staff's responses, they would welcome preliminary response from staff at the same time the report is presented, but they would like to have a more thorough response by the end of August, because they usually meet at the toward the end of August to talk about the following year. And before they talk about the following, they would like to have staff's full responses. Who else? Ms. Evans?
So APAC likes its current composition. They think that the number and the composition works well. They like the idea of reporting in June and July. They like the idea of staff having an immediate response. They're suggesting that they might have their mid-year report, might just be a written report, and then have the full report at the end of the year.
I forgot one thing for today, thank you. For ACE, they would prefer not to have more than two committees present the reports on the same night, and they would like to be, you know, paired with CTEC. Okay, who's next? Ms. Pritchett?
So I did not have a chance. I know FISA, head starts a little bit different. So I didn't get a sense of having them changed to superintendent. I think we just have to talk to staff who help run it as well, and how it would affect the way they operate currently. I don't think that they want to make too many changes to that. For SHAC, you know, they have been working on a wellness policy over the past few years. So one of their concerns was, as we change to the one-year term, if there is a way to have consistency and perhaps a two-year term for officers. And, and they also would like to have some input from current members as to what kind of membership they're looking for. If we're doing appointees, you know, do they want someone who has, you know, a health experience or legal experience, that kind of thing. But I think not too much specifically as to the numbers. I think, like others have said, not too much change to the current structure. They feel like they've been getting a lot of work done the way it is, so just trying to keep it that way and ensuring continued work with staff. So report, you know, because they are working with staff, having the reports be tied into the work that's happening. I don't know if that made sense.
Okay, who's next? Any other board liaison?
Um, okay.
Mrs. Huff?
Yeah, so I will do my best. I don't know that I really, I felt like they didn't really want to commit, and part of it is that.
Which committee is this?
Well, both, actually. Just, but a lot of it because I couldn't answer their questions as to how it would be changed, since I didn't.
Two committees?
Human Relations Advisory and Title One. So, Human Relations thought that it sounded like a good idea. One of the things we had talked about for them was maybe becoming more combined with MSAOC because much of what they do is overlapping and similar, so that they become more of a human resources, which was what I remember we talked about. They thought that that sounded like something they would like to talk about. But when I spoke to the chair, he didn't necessarily want to commit for the groups, but thought that it sounded like a good plan. Title One had a lot of questions about reporting to the superintendent directly. I talked to the staff member, and she wanted to discuss it some more with her board. But her main question was if they weren't, I guess their board really wants to get to a point where when they report out, it's more of an advocacy versus what they've been doing, and a recap on what they've been doing, and if they did that, reporting to the superintendent, would it have the same effect as reporting to the full board? That that advocacy would get relayed appropriately, and that we would hear what we needed to if it meant a policy-type change.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, also for the Career and Technical Advisory Committee, the only one I have any real strong direction is that they did think it was a good idea to stagger presentations. But the other ones, I still need to gather more information from the committee.
Okay. Any other board member who hasn't spoken, need to speak? Yes?
I raised this before, I'm going to raise it again. I'm very concerned at the concept of the Title One committee not reporting to the full school board, given the amount of poverty in this county and the demands and needs for Title One schools. I think that it is important, given that the funding comes from a federal level, that we have the board engaged at that level.
Okay. I'm sure that we have plenty of opportunity to discuss the merits of various suggestions at the next work session. Any further feedback? You know, continue, continue getting your feedback if you feel that you need to go back to your advisory committees and provide the rest of us with a more feedback from your respective advisory committee. With that, we are going to go to the second topic, which is a standing committee. If you open up the first attachment, there are two sets, option one and option two, but before you go to option one and option two, at the top, you will see that governance committee's recommendation is to keep audit, budget, and governance committee. Just leave them alone, just keep those. And then, PAC and CPDC to be sort of combined? With the new committees, I'm sorry, with, you know, their jobs, their work will be folded into other committees.
Mr. Moon, sorry, would you mind spelling out CPDC, what it stands for?
Comprehensive Plan Development Committee. They have not been doing much, so, and.
They were created as a, for the temporary, temporarily, they were formed or then created.
Oversea, create, FPA, but, okay, let's go to option one. Option one is to create four committees to be aligned with the strategic plan goals. Whether we have a goal one, goal two, goal three, goal four. Whether we're going to be naming them as goal one committee, goal two committee, goal three committee, that, you know, there's no recommendation from us. But the resource stewardship, resource stewardship is basically going to come under budget. So budget committee will do, to the resource stewardship work, is option one. Option two is create four committees of the whole for each of the four main departments under superintendent. Human Resources, Facilities and Transportation, and Instruction, but Budget, we already talked about. So under option two, we will have Human Resources, Special Services, Transportation, Instruction, and Audit, Budget, and Governance.
Chairman Moon, you, you didn't include Special Services. That was supposed to be the fourth department that we would capture. Budget, budget we knew would fall on, the Finance Department would go under budget.
I stand corrected. I think, I think I might have overlooked that when I saw this. I'm sorry, there was, so there will be seven.
There'll be seven, right.
Special Services.
Special Services.
I take questions, okay? Kimmy Evans?
Under option two, how would committees of the whole work? I mean, I know Budget is a committee of the whole. We have a Budget Chair, Budget Vice Chair. How would it work for things like Facilities, Instruction, and Human Resources if we had those as committees of a whole?
You just meet whole, everybody's invited to that meeting. So we're not going to have a separate, smaller committee meeting to discuss those. So some of the work session topics we do on a all-day work session would be that.
So we would have a Chair and a Vice Chair.
We'd have a Chair and Vice Chair.
And then the Chair and Vice Chair.
Chair could be developing the agenda.
A meeting of the committee of the whole?
They could be developing the agenda, but when they convene the meeting, it's everybody. Just like Board of Supervisors, their committees are all committees as a whole.
Okay.
Well, their committees is everybody. Right, it's up to you.
So then, under option one, wouldn't resource stewardship pretty much overlap with Budget?
That's actually, yeah, this Budget Committee will be doing that.
So under option one, resource stewardship would replace Budget, or Budget would be in?
Budget Committee will be doing this resource stewardship piece of work. So we'd have like a six committees.
Six committees, okay.
And option two is seven committees, and committee membership will be different. But, you know, these are just a couple of options for you to consider. You know, it would be all be up to the rest of us to decide how to do. It could be either of those options, or combinations, or deviations, or modifications, however you call it.
Chairman Moon, typically what we do is those of us who serve on the committee with you in governance, after you introduce it, then the rest of us who serve provide any additional context before we take questions. That way, at least we can let you guys know what we discussed.
Ms. Tana Kofax?
Yes, I'm, like, at first blush, I like the idea of option one, but it's very complicated. First of all, you have staff liaisons for each of those, and, you know, I, like, I think our earlier conversation on the other topic, when we were talking about, and my brain is dead now, but when we were talking about the information on one-to-one technology, and we were talking about where it fit in the strategic plan, and I was trying to, the one comment I made was about how we don't really have that a person in charge of the strategic plan, yet I kind of sidebar'd with Ms. Hines. So for that one, have you thought out, like, how the staff goals would change? Would it be the person kind of under each of those, or who the staff liaison would be? Have you gone to that level, just based upon what we're talking about earlier today? It just made me think about that, and kind of what you said, what Ms. Evans said about the Budget. Well, the Budget Committee, the two people who are the committee, if you will, it's a very different animal, what we do now as the Budget Committee compared to what we would do under resource stewardship. And it kind of marries the conversation that we were having earlier today about that situation with where does that fall, that one-to-one computing, the resources that, so have you thought about that level?
Yeah, we didn't have an opportunity to go into that kind of a detail, who the staff person will be, where they will fall. But if we follow their model, aligning the goals in the strategic plan, that one-to-one comes on the street on success.
Okay.
So that could be.
Doesn't even come under stewardship, right, right.
I mean, that's where I saw, so, I mean, my assumption would be that, but, but.
Okay.
Mrs. McLaughlin, you wanted to provide?
Yeah, in terms of these models, I mean, I, I wanted to provide the context. So if you look at option two, again, Budget is not saying Budget, it's Special Services. Those were, you know, the four other departments that aren't captured above the other three, other than if you were to think about Communications, and, you know, we figured we can figure out the Department of Communications on where you'd want that to be, but, you know, my concern, Ms. Kofax, because you were asking, you know, what that would be like. The goal is that if you look at the model of the Board of Supervisors, you know, they, they do have their committees of the whole. They do then get the reports that are coming out from those departments on, again, whatever, it's not, it's not that you're kept to a goal report, a monitoring report once a year, it's just whatever is going on within those departments, you're getting briefed. And so, that's why I think there's a real value to option two. There's also the clarity piece. If we're trying to be as transparent with the public as possible, they're going to look at these other four board committees and say, what's student success? But it's really clear at understanding the board's work around the departments that we have. And so I think for the public to understand the oversight and the work we're doing, there's a value there. And so I, I hope that people will really think about the benefits of this type of model. And, you know, one of the things that Chairman Moon pointed out, or Committee Chair Moon pointed out, board all-day work sessions to focus on in-depth committee reports. I mean, right now, we have to remember, these standing committees are our work. It's not staff liaisons. Yes, we obviously interface with them, but it's our ability to focus on our responsibilities, providing the stewardship and governance of the school system, and so that's how the supervisors do it. They, they, they're, they don't have, you know, a work session, and then committee meetings, and then, you know, they have their regular business meeting, and we have our Thursday night business meeting. But then, this is how they do their work as a whole. And so our work session, one thing we talked about is not just your committee, but then, how do the committees function? We then decide that our, our work sessions become where a committee work as a whole on these areas gets done. And so it's not creating more work, we actually might even streamline and not have standing committee work, plus work sessions, plus business meetings.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
Thank you, that's helpful. I think just looking at it, kind of at first blush, I like the idea of having our committees related to the strategic plan, though, I do. I think that the point of a strategic plan is to make our work all strategic, right? And I also like that that would keep it to six committees, which I think is a little easier. There are 12 of us, somehow that makes it seem easier to me. That should not matter a lot. But my questions are, these are big, these could be really big topics. I feel like the committee would have to maybe, at the beginning of the year, have a charge or something. I mean, I feel it would almost be like the advisory committees, because I'm not sure, or have one or two goals, or something like that, because, you know, for number one, our work session time is really tight. And I think it could very easily, I hear what you're saying, Ms. McLaughlin, the idea is that it would fit, it would be different work, not more work, right, or, but, but I still think there's a possibility. I mean, if, you know, you look at these goals, and Steve Locker, you can, you know, attest to this, the reports that we've been getting on these goals have been huge. There's a lot of work being done. So we would have to be really intentional and discreet about what we think the board should be talking about, I think. But anyway, it's good work.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I, for exactly the reason you just illuminated, Ms. Hines, I wouldn't think that the best way to do committees is to chunk out portions of the strategic plan. That's what the strategic plan's for. Fundamentally, we do a handful of things. We do the budget, we do facilities, we do people. And, and, and we, we, we teach. How those fit into the strategic plan in the way in which we interpret our work is the work of the staff. The way in which we handle the big buckets of what we do, you can't, you can't fundamentally undo the fact that we deal with buildings, people, teaching, and the money that is used to do all of the above. So I think if we try to morph ourselves to a strategic plan alignment, it's going to be unnatural and unwieldy, because I think you're right. I think it is going to be too big. Whereas, we naturally handle things like the CIP, things like the budget, things like, you know, people. And so, I think it is, there is a natural flow to our work that we can then say, how does this fit to the strategic plan, and work that with staff through the committee. But to try to unbundle, because there's resource stewardship, well, that's, that's budget. Well, so is care and culture, you know, that's budget, and so is student success, that's budget. And I, then I think you create subsections of all of the things that we do if you try to do option one. So I don't think that fundamentally makes sense. I think the reporting structure becomes too large, and it doesn't have a connectedness to that which we do as a board and as a body.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
And I hate to do this as I'm running out the door, but I would suggest that when we look at this, we should be looking at this from a matrix point of view, and that the four categories that have been identified from the strategic plan are really the four lenses in which we look at the resources for which we govern. And so, I, I would be more inclined to look at it from a functional perspective of what is the function of each of the individual committees. And the function would be, are we creating our human resources policy? Does it support achieving a premier workforce and a caring culture? In our facilities and transportation, are we ensuring that we have a caring culture in the which, in the manner in which we provide facilities and transportation for the student's success? And are we managing it, the resources associated with it appropriately? So there, you've got three different lines that support that one, facilities and transportation. And instruction, it should be student success, it should be caring culture. So that's why I'm saying, I, I think that we're better aligned from a functional, it doesn't necessarily have to be departmental, but a functional, of what are the resources we manage? And then, how do we manage those to ensure that we achieve the goals outlined in our strategic plan? And I think this is something that warrants a fuller conversation than being added at the very end of a long day, and I apologize, but I have to be someplace.
Okay, thank you. In the May work session, we're not going to be at the very end of the work session. I'm asking Madame Chair not to put it at the very end. Thank you. I mean, Ms. Hines?
Well, I mean, that's the challenge we have, right? We have much more to discuss already than we have time to discuss. We're going to, this is, if you think this is bad, wait till Thursday night. We're going to be here till 10 o'clock probably, because we have so much to talk about. And so I would just say, my general feeling is, you know, and maybe I'm pushing back a little bit with Mrs. Schultz, we don't teach, we don't lay bricks, right? We don't write checks, we govern. And I think that our committees should be at the governance level, that's all I would say. And if, whatever we call it, you know, I just, what I worry about is if we have committees that are tied to departments, I just think that's going to be a temptation to get, you know, into the weeds and create a lot more work for ourselves and staff than really we ought to be doing. That's my only caution.
Okay, I have Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
I apologize that, like Ms. Corbett Sanders, I've got to run to an evening commitment, but, Ms. Hines, I completely understand the worry, but just to give you an example like today, so we had one on digital transformation, or that would fall under instruction. We had one on the student discipline, so, you know, that can either go toward instruction or special services. So it's, it's not even so much that, again, we're going to create more work, or that we could still even have our work sessions operate like they did today. It's just that it would read as, you know, the instructional, instructional committee, and be led by the Chair and Vice Chair, but they already would have had on the agenda that the superintendent said, at, at your committee report, what we want to present to you guys is what we're doing on the digital transformation. And, you know, Special Services is going to be on board, and this is what we're going to have. I mean, I actually think, again, it would give more definition, and people would understand that instead of our work sessions that sort of look like, you'll get this, you'll get this report, they could see logically, so you're getting information on your instructional services that you're offering in your school system, you're getting it within facilities. And some committees might need to have a report come, you know, again, at a Monday work session, and then maybe later in the month at a Thursday, depending on the workload. The superintendent still controls, you know, the information, but it also still gives us an opportunity to. us an opportunity to, in, in discussing with each other, you know, hey, as board members, you know, in addition to this report we're getting from staff, let's never forget, these work sessions are, are our work. And we get staff information to inform that work, but we don't seem to really control and own, in, in some respects, what we're doing. So I, I, I think, given that this model works really well for the supervisors, I don't see them digging into the weeds, and I don't think that this board's going to dig in the weeds. We don't have the time nor the capabilities to do it, but I think we need something more logical than our committees are right now. Sorry to leave everybody.
Okay, I have Ms. Strauss to be followed by Mr. Wilson, Pouch again, Evans, anybody else? And hopefully with, after that, we can end the conversation for tonight, and then wait until May time. Okay, Mrs. Strauss?
Okay. Working backward, our strategic plan is much more of a matrix plan, which is, which brings power, so that it is not each one of the four parts of the strategic plan is not strictly divided into one department, clearly. When we are teaching children and deciding how all that's going, it is multifaceted. If we go to departments, then we are basically looking in a silo. One of, I mean, that's basically what we're doing. And so do we want our work to be siloed, or do we want it to be strategic based on our plan? I would be concerned if we went to departments where we silo again. I suspect we will be adding to our workload and adding to our meetings would be my concern. So I'm not, anyway, I don't want to go backward, I don't want to go back to siloing, I would much rather focus on strategic movement going forward. Thanks.
Mr. Wilson?
Okay. I, I unfortunately missed the Governance Committee meeting when you, when we talked about it, but, and so excuse my ignorance about this a little bit, but if, if I'm understanding the two options, really it's a matter of nomenclature almost that we're talking about. There, there's four in both options, and in both option one and two, committees that are currently named something else get folded in to committees with new names, but that are now standing committees. Am I accurate?
You know, option and option two, it's, it's a different approaches. No matter what the names may be, as pointed out earlier, for example, Human Resources could be, could have store, resource stewardship implications, premier workforce or caring culture.
I see. So, so what you, what, what's embedded in here is that, what, if you were under option one, the new committee would have a new mission depending on what was folded into it, and the, and looking at, say, for example, the, the goal one of the strategic plan. So they, that would require the Governance Committee or to come up with that new mission to, to address what that committee would do, because it's, if it's not just a nomenclature, and it's, then it's, then it is a bigger conversation to have about what are we doing work-wise? And I guess that would bring me to the question of, other than the current system being cumbersome, and that maybe there's a couple extra committees that people can't staff, unless we feel like the work those committees are doing doesn't match the work we should be doing, you know, with, without sort of having the conversation about what the mission statement would be of, and figuring out under the two options, I don't know that we, I would be prepared to make a decision on whether to change it.
Okay, not changing anything is an option.
Yes, that's option three, right?
Well, there could be little change, a lot change, those could be all options.
I mean, I guess one, one thing I would say is that if, you know, I think from a, if it, if we're talking and if it's really just a, a nomenclature-type issue, option two seems much clearer, because I think people in the community would see, oh, well, it's, they do Human Resources and that, but it doesn't sound like that's really accurate in terms of what we're trying to do here. So I don't know how I feel about it, this.
Okay, I have a Ms. Pouch next.
Yes, actually, well, I think Ms. Strauss put my words into her words very well. I think it's not so, it's a lot about going forward, and, you know, I was on the sidelines as the strategic plan was created, and I know it was also recommended by the Gibson Report to have a strategic plan. I feel that where we are now as a board, it would, and I can see the merits of option two, so it was hard, but I think option one would help us focus, would help us as a board understand what is under each goal. I think it became clear today that, talking about digital transformation, we had to have a review of where it stands in the goals, where it is, how we ensure that we have the proper metrics, because I think that's one area where, you know, we may want to reconsider, do the metrics we currently have make sense? Do we want to reconsider them? Do we want to have new metrics? How do we ensure that it's not just a plan that was created, but it's one that's implemented? And so because our time is limited, and because I think, you know, HR and Facilities and Instruction can come in where, where it makes sense for meetings, to run meetings, to give reports, to even work as liaisons with the Citizen Advisory Committees, and to get away from the silos, but more around what is our governance and what is the work that the board has set forth? I think that having our committees align around our new, our new goals will help us, I think, reinvigorate the purpose of the strategic plan.
Ms. Evans?
So I'm just wrapping my mind around all these committees of a, of a whole. So I, I think I'm understanding what you're, you're, you're bringing to us, but I want to be sure I do. Basically, we would have only two subcommittees then, we would have Audit and Governance, right? They, they would be under the current...
They're just standing committees, right.
Yeah, right. And then we, and then Budget would be, Budget and the other three or four would be committees of the whole, each with a Chair and Vice Chair. And they would set the agenda and then bring it to, to basically an all-day work session? Is that how we would be making decisions and getting reports?
On the option two?
Either one, either one or two.
Option...
Since they're both committees of the whole.
This is, this is what I'm going to ask you, after you and Mr. McLaughlin is done with.
Yeah.
These are just some of the options.
Right.
And we only had enough time to talk about two options.
Okay.
The, there could be, you know, a different number of committees under different names, size of each committee could be different, I mean, it could be, you know, some, you know, all, you know, every single committee could be committee as a whole, or, or every committee could be just subset of the entire board.
Okay.
It could be a combination. Also, also start thinking about workload, number of meetings we may potentially have to have under different structure, also think about quorum that we would need.
Yeah.
If it is a committee as a whole, we need seven.
Right.
Seven, and, and, and sometimes, you know, committees may meet multiple times before bringing to the full board.
Right.
How that's going to work, how, depending upon how we change. Think about all those for the next several weeks when you have another opportunity in May. That is why we want to have this preliminary conversation, yes.
So my initial reaction was that the committees should not be committees of the whole, because you, you want a sub, a subset of the board, but I, as I say, I'm kind of coming around to the idea of a committee of the whole, if you had a Chair and Vice Chair that could set it up, talk with all the board members, sort of like the Budget Chair and Vice Chair do now, and I, I'm just, I'm, I'm seeing if we have this many committees of the whole, we could be here for a very long time, unless it's really organized very well. So as far as option one or option two, I see the, I see pros and cons of each. There is a clarity to option two, you know, you would, whoever was the Chair and, and Vice Chair on that would be real clear on who they interacted with on this, a little, I think there's more clarity to it. But I also, you know, we have just spent a year and a half doing our strategic plan, so I don't feel strongly either, you know, what the names of the committees are. I guess I, I would want to know more about how the committee of the whole would, would operate efficiently.
Okay, I have a Mr. McLaughlin.
So in, as a member of Governance, each time I've shuddered to think about the hundreds of thousands of dollars we spent on Randy and Linda, you know, in coming up with our current system. And I think the, the, the two problem areas I see are, well, I guess there's just one problem area in the current system, which is CPDC. And my preference, although I sit on the committee, is not to do, do any of this. I would much prefer to just see more minor changes. I think CPD can be something, you know, I, I don't particularly like PEC, so I'd be happy to do, turn that into something else. But those are the two problem areas, if, if any.
Okay, Mr. Kofax?
I think this is a very complicated process, and I feel like we're trying to rush it. Is there any reason we feel like, you know, we have to have it done by this May? Because think about it, you know, I, I know the Budget's looking much better than we thought, but we do have Budget, and this is very, very complicated. I think, like I said, I'm concerned about where management of the strategic plan is on a staff level, I'm concerned about those, you know, segmenting out, and committees of the whole, may I remind our board that we are a part-time board? If we're modeling ourselves after the Board of Supervisors, who is a full-time board, and they have these committees of the whole, I think that's a very different animal, like Ms. Evans said, God, she shudders, or somebody said, I shudder, so I'll say that, I shudder at the amount of time that this could possibly take our board. Ms. Hines is saying right now, at this point in time, we can barely, and I don't think what this, let me go back to that one thing that I do like that Randy and Linda said, streamline and focus, and I do not think this is putting us down that road, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Strauss, you'll be the last one.
I just have to warn people, years ago, when we had all these other committees, we had a meeting every single night, and that was every single night.
No, just three nights a week.
Well, sometimes it, but then we had Thursday, four nights a week, so it was, so I am, I'm very concerned about workload. I mean, that's, I am very, that's the one problem I've got.
Okay, so we got a, almost a whole month before the May work session, you know, as, as Governance Committee Chair, I'm hoping to be able to reach a consensus. Consensus could be a lot of things. Make a final decision, or buy more time, okay? Not do anything too wicked, but I just don't want to go on and on and on without having some agreement of what to do, what I want not to do at some point, on both advisory committees and standing committees. So with that said, again, making a request to a Madam Chair to set aside a couple of hours, two full hours, not the very end of the day, but sometime during the days, so that I could eat a more time of other, other work session topics. And, and give yourself a lot of time to give a more thought about various different options we could potentially consider at the next session. With that, this meeting is adjourned. I knew this was going to be tough.